Hey Ron.
Oh, I'm seeing, you see. Uh, Ben Martinez. Okay, let me see and who else we have here. Okay, Chief Lopez, thank you for being here.
Okay, Mayor, you can start it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. So, all right. So at this point, one more please. At this point, I'd like to open up the Ballard Park uh city council special meeting. Uh, today, September the sixteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, the time is uh five, five, uh, five oh nine. Uh, so at this point, I will ask Madam uh Deputy City Clerk, if you received uh communications to be read.
Roll call.
No, hold on. Is the miss, do we, do we have?
No, Mayor, we do not.
We do not. All right. So at this point, I believe someone interrupted there.
Sorry, Mayor.
I will go ahead and ask uh for roll call. Uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Ayala.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
He will be with us momentarily.
Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protem Hernandez.
Present.
And Mayor Lozano.
Present. I just saw where it says Monica Garcia. To all panelists, I'm here. That she just go, that she is with us. Right. So, thank, thank you. Thank you very much. So at this point, I will read the agenda. For the uh study session, which is the uh, we have the call session, which will be the uh Vision Zero Presentation, presented by Assembly Devers, Director of Public Works. And then we'll have the review of affordable senior housing development design proposed by Retirement Housing Foundation E. Presented by Ben Martinez, Director of Community Development. Then we'll reach us to the public, the employees pursuant to government code five four nine five seven. Uh, position the police chief, uh, item two, which is a conference with labor negotiator, negotiator, negotiators, excuse me. Item three, conference with uh legal counsel, dispute litigation. Item four, real property negotiations pursuant to government code five four nine five six point eight. Then we will go over to uh actually that, item five, which is the conference of legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of the subdivision B, uh government code section five four nine five six point nine. So uh, we have a, an extensive um little agenda that, that we will be going through. So at this point, I'll go ahead and give the mic over to the first presentation, and I believe that uh our host there would be Mr. San Guo Perez.
Mayor, I also just wanted to mention that we do have housing authority and finance authority today.
Yes, well, that's for the city council. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, legal counsel.
Yeah, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and uh City Council. So we've uh put together a uh brief uh presentation to be, to be presented by David Diaz from Active S T V. And the presentation is about a Vision Zero, which is uh, which is a movement uh that has a strategy uh to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries, uh while at the same time increasing life uh uh safe and healthy and equitable mobility for all users. Um, there is a resolution on tonight's uh regular meeting agenda to uh uh adopt um a uh Vision Zero policy and to uh develop an action plan. So uh David will uh explain more in his presentation, and if you have any questions after that, we're, we're here and happy to answer. So, uh, David?
I thank you. This is uh Mr. David Diaz.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. David, is he there?
Yeah, thank you, Sam. Um, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is David Diaz. I'm the Executive Director of Active San Gibo Valley. If you recall, we're helping or have been organizing the bike safety business program out in Balden Park and seeing many of you in and around town at many of the community events. We can go on to the next slide. A little bit about us, as you know, we're a place-based organization focused on eastern Los Angeles County, the San Gibo Valley, and we're dedicated to creating a more sustainable, equitable, livable San Gibo Valley. We're just headquartered here. Uh, neighbors of yours in the city of Monte, uh, next slide. And so I really want to applaud the city of Balden Park for considering this effort uh to pass the Vision Zero Resolution tonight. I think it's the first step in getting to zero tra- traffic fatalities. Historically, we've seen that this is an approach taken by larger communities. Again, uh, your neighbors, the city of Monte, have also adopted a Vision Zero Resolution, but we really see this absent in many smaller communities. And so I really want to thank you all for considering this as illustrated here in the presentation. This is an initiative to eliminate all traffic-related fatalities. Um, in twenty seventeen, this is according to the Office of Traffic Safety, there were two hundred and forty fatal and injured persons in the city of Balden Park due to traffic-related collisions. Uh, this is a systematic approach to making sure that you have policies, practices, and infrastructure design in place to lessen the severity of collisions, because we do know that, you know, we're all human and we're gonna make errors, and so these things will happen. Next slide, please. And so here's the Balden Park Office of Traffic Safety data. I will note that this is a data from twenty seventeen, and this is one of the considerations as part of your action plan is to, on an ongoing basis, be able to collect data more often, respond to it, and take, take and address some of the instances and things that are happening through what we call High Injury Network, in which I'll talk a little bit more later in the presentation. So you see here the disaggregation and ranking across the state for Balden Park commands. And so as you see here, total fatal and injury, two hundred and forty-eight persons. And then it gives you disaggregation by nighttime, hit a, hit and run, tech to arrest, U I R S. And then your ranking comparable to other similarly sized cities across the state of California. Next slide. Um, and so the most common principles um that are included within the design of a Vision Zero Action Plan are education, evaluation, encouragement, engineering, enforcement, and equity. And if we can go on to the next slide. Uh, I'm gonna talk about what those look like and what are some examples. These are all for reference within your actual development of your Vision Zero Action Plan. You'll be able to develop strategies that have an implementation, cost, and timeline that'll be included. So for example, one of the critical components um is not only driver education, but also people who are walking or biking. You know, here at Active S T V, we teach, um, you know, with COVID now, we teach online. We teach bike safety classes online, but we're able to offer people rules of the road, traffic safety one-on-one, learning how to bike classes uh for folks so that, you know, users of the road, so that the user of the road know all the rules, so like signaling, signaling, stopping and turning, starting and stopping, all those sort of things, all to promote a culture of safety. Uh, go to hit the next slide. Uh, encouragement, if you all recall, we hosted an Open Streets event with you all in Balden Park. Those events are critical to to garnering public support and awareness of what it means to uh have safe streets in your communities. Other things or examples are walk, walk or bike to school days. We've partnered with the city of Balden Park, as well as Balden Park Unified School District, to host and coordinate walk or bike to school days. Um, and so as part of your Vision Zero Action Plan, that's one of the considerations, ongoing encouragement to know that it's not gonna be a singular event, but really integrated within the systematic approach so that children, parents, school district staff, Balden Park City staff, Balden Park City elected officials, um, are really promoting this uh culture of safety. Go ahead to the next one. And then evaluation, as, as I mentioned at the beginning of this, you see that the data is from twenty seventeen. That's the most recent data available, but, you know, your police department will have the most available data uh that, that they have, that they're already tracking. And so one of the action steps that could be considered within the development of the evaluation principles is that you're responding to real-time data to be able to identify what they call High Injury Network. And so those would be identified roads or intersections within the city of Balden Park, which I'm sure, you know, some of you could already speak to, if I were to ask you, what are the trouble areas in your community? I'm sure that you come up with five to ten places um where you see a lot of collisions or a lot of uh conflict between pedestrians and people who are driving. Um, and so tracking, measuring, evaluating progress on an ongoing basis are gonna be critical to Vision Zero success. And so one of the things that we recommend is starting with a uh survey, a community survey about existing conditions and attitudes for folks that are, that are walking or biking currently. Um, as someone who is, lives in a single-car household, my main form of transportation is walking, biking, or taking public transit. And so there's a lot of expertise within people's lived experience of only getting around via walking, biking, or transit. Go ahead to the next slide. And then enforcement and equity. Um, this is a, this is a big conversation here with respect to enforcement. One of the things that I do wanna highlight or uplift is that we've seen that increasing enforcement could exacerbate injustices and increase distrust in the community, seems punitive. Um, and so we're offering some other strategies the city could consider, uh specifically looking at other Vision Zero plans that have been developed. Um, in Denver, these are some of the recommendations that have come out from their um Vision Zero Plan. So instead of in-person traffic enforcement, focus on street design improvements, which you're gonna see in the next couple of slides, some of the engineering uh things that actually lead to, to better safety for people who are walking and biking, automated speed enforcement along the High Injury Network, along school routes. So, you know, with automated speed enforcement, this is not uh subjective to a human being, but it's, you know, if you're going above the speed limit, you know, it's uh, it's gonna be recorded, and then offer a diversion program. So at Active S T V, we're currently partnered with the Almani Courthouse, and we're working to expand it to the West Covina Courthouse. Um, so that if you're cited or ticketed or illegally uh riding your bike on the sidewalk or riding the wrong way, these folks are offered via the courthouse an opportunity, similarly to if you were ticketed, uh, driving a vehicle to attend an Active S T V class at no cost to that person for a reduced fee or forgiveness of the ticket itself. Um, and so that's a way that we're not being punitive towards people who may not be familiar with the rules of the road, may have a language barrier or other. Um, so that again, it's not, it's not seen as punitive, but really promoting a culture of safety and building trust among community. Go ahead to the next slide. And then engineering, these are some of the pictures that I wanna show you, show you all that are, that are a little fun to look at. And so starting from, you know, left to right, um, you could see like why speed matters. The drivers feel the vision narrows at higher speeds. Um, and so you see one at fifty miles an hour, one at twenty, bottom left corner, twenty-five miles an hour. And then at thirty miles an hour, you see what, what they see, right? And keep this, keep the size of the circle in mind as we go uh onto the next slide um to see why this is important. So now someone's traveling thirty miles an hour, and we know that here from this statistic that almost forty-five percent of drivers read a text or send an email while driving. And so distracted driving in this time and age is becoming very, very dangerous for people who are walking, biking out on city streets. And so if they're going thirty miles an hour and they're texting or emailing, you can imagine how perilous that is for folks who are, who are walking or biking that don't have the same buffer as someone that's in a vehicle. Um, and then to your right of the screen, you'll see what they call Refuge Island or Pedestrian Island. So when you have large or wide uh roads, you wanna be able to provide as many mid-block crossings as you can in the event that people with disabilities or children or people that are more vulnerable aren't able to get all the way across with the allotted time. That there's a, there's a place for them to not be in the middle of the street. Go ahead and hit the next one. And then here you have other engineering aspects, which, you know, Sam and John are really great about. Uh, the complete, uh, abiding by the Complete Streets policy and making sure that these designs are included. These will be central to having a successful Vision Zero approach. Again, infrastructure is really key. So here you have a pedestrian activated warning beacon, beacon, so the flashing yellow lights that provide additional warning to drivers that pedestrians crossing the roadway. Left turn signal phasing provides a green arrow for left-turning vehicles or stopping conflicting vehicles and pedestrians. And then one of our, one of the more low-cost approaches that people can take are these L P I's, these leading pedestrian intervals. Um, also known as early walk. Um, so here you go. Research suggests that a nearly sixty percent reduction in pedestrian vehicle crashes can be achieved by adding these lead pedestrian intervals. And so these are, you know, with respect to some of the other infrastructure costs, one of the more cost-effective things or solutions that the city could do immediately. Go ahead to the next one. And then roadway lighting, lighting is always a concern for safety. Lighting can make all the difference in a community. Separated bikeways, uh, they provide physical separation between bicyclists and traveling motorists. That, that picture is actually taken from your neighbors over in Temple City. They ever got a chance to ride up and down uh Roseman Boulevard. Curb extensions, as you see here, this uh, this person is walking across the crosswalk, and there's, you know, gutter, and then the curb extension, also known as a bowl bout. Again, to shorten the, the crossing for pedestrians. What you find is that if you develop or, or design streets that are wide enough, twelve, fourteen feet uh for cars to travel faster, guess what? They're gonna be traveling faster. And so it's really important to narrow lanes to be able to slow things down so that, you know, pedestrians and other people who are not in a car are traveling safely. Go ahead and hit the next one. And then here, temporary roadway enhancements. Uh, recently, the Council of Governments had a request to repurpose some of the Open Streets money to do some of these temporary roadway enhancements so that you can test and pilot them in your community. So all the things that you see in this picture in the upper right-hand corner are actually just um, you know, uh, temporary. So it's paint, a couple cones, markers, et cetera, so that you can see what, what this could look like. And you don't have to have, it helps to have the actual physical infrastructure. But in the short term, if you wanna alleviate some of the intersection concerns, and you wanna pilot or get feedback from community on what their experiences, what recommendations could be made, this is a, a low-cost solution here. Um, and then one thing that I'll also point out here is that a lot of, there, another short-term approach that you all can take, see how there's like red curb painting all along, on, on the intersection here? Many times that when cars park there, it blocks the sight for the driver traveling either east or west or north or south for anyone that may be going into the crosswalk. And so if you look at all those blind spots that, that are, you know, that, that are in Balden Park right now, by just red curbing them, you can mitigate or prevent someone from hitting someone that's walking across the street. Uh, go ahead to the next one. And then this is just more examples. So there are refugee islands, which we talked about, and the roadway reconfigurations. Um, uh, again, Balden Park's done a, done a good job of applying for California A T P grants uh to draw down some of this funding. I know that you are working, submit one for this round as well. Um, so these types of infrastructure improvements are really gonna make a difference. Go ahead and hit the next slide. And so here you are, keys to success. So equity and data-driven decision-making, again, responding uh to what the community feels is, is the most, most important, what their attitudes are, what their lived experiences, having data to support the decisions and making infrastructure improvements that would then hopefully be included in your um, into your capital improvement program. Um, long-term commitment, so funding commitment, every city receives local return from the Measure M program. There's also opportunities through the Measure M, so regional program. Now with uh Measure W, you know, you have an opportunity to create multi-benefit programs um that could all uh be funding sources. And, and I think, you know, Balden Park committing five, a minimum of five percent to ten percent a local return from, that they receive would be a strong signal to their commitment to achieving this uh zero deaths in the next ten years. And then ongoing community engagement and popular education. Uh, absolutely, folks will, will have their questions about the practicability of some of the design improvements and some of the things that are being made, but having ongoing iterative conversations with community members, multiple languages, uh, Spanish, English, you know, the A P I languages are gonna be critical to ensuring success, because you wanna not only uh communicate, you know, what the challenges are, but also the successes, right? Um, and then last but not least, collaborative approach to get to zero fatalities. So this will take um, an integrated approach within your departments, within your community stakeholders, with community, police force, uh, to ensure that you can get to zero fatalities. It's really, it's really dynamic culture shift in the way that we think about traffic congestion, uh mitigating speeding and other uh vehicular concerns. Um, and so with that, that concludes my presentation. If we wanna go on to the next slide. That's me. That's just my contact info.
Yeah, well, let me, first of all, uh, first of all, David Diaz, thank you very much. It's a ve- very impressive uh uh presentation, and it's something that a lot of things that we, we have somewhat maybe adopted, but we need to, I mean, we have uh barely just touched the surface on, but what you're presenting here, we definitely need to uh make sure that we uh apply this to our community, especially the um survey that you did. And now it's interesting, you're saying that bicyclists uh and had more, um, I guess, um, accidents, twenty-eight-year report. I think that was the highest on that report at four hundred and twenty. Could we place that back up there? That survey place, uh, David, is that possible? Were the, the fatal accidents?
Yeah, sure. Somebody, whoever was controlling the I T could put that back up.
Oh, sorry about that. Because just, I, I saw that survey and I said, wow. Seems like the uh bi- bicyclists have um taken a brunt on this survey here. So we look, if we look through here, let me see what, what I have. Uh, hold on, real quick. That's some blocking me.
Yes, so what you're looking at is the total number of, of uh people who are biking, which is twenty-seven. Uh, but if you see like, you know, it's, one of them is bicyclist under fifteen years old, that's seven. Um, and so comparatively to the rest of the state, you know, ten out of a hundred and six, um, it is quite high, you know, uh, Balden Park, right? It's top, top ten, so. Um, it, you know, again, it's like how much infrastructure, one of the conversations we have, Mayor Lozano, is, you know, we build bikeway networks, or we build uh class-two bike lanes, the ones with, you know, the paint on the floor. Uh, but really, you know, after the paint or after that one bike lane, where do people go, right? They go right back into absent infrastructure into the roadway. And so it's not consistent. And so if you were a driver and you only had one mile to drive on a paved road, right, where, where would you go next, right? You kind of go off-road. And it feels like that a little bit for people who are, who are biking without proper infrastructure.
Yeah, you don't, uh, yes, exactly. And I definitely hear, I actually like that survey. Um, before, before I go on, David, I just wanna acknowledge and thank Vice Mayor um Paul Hernandez uh for bringing this up, placing this on the agenda, because it really gives you a, a whole caption of the community and the areas that we need to concentrate to assure that pedestrians are, are in the community. Um, there was a little, little conversations about Main Boulevard, and how's that become a uh, from a four-lane uh street to a two-lane street? Well, guess what? Now you don't have um uh competition where two vehicles are speeding, you know, headed towards West Covina or, or the opposite way. Because that was definitely uh known as a, as a drag race area, but uh, thank you for the presentation. Excellent, excellent data. Councilmembers, anyone else?
Mayor, it's Monica Garcia.
Yes, it's Monica Garcia.
Hi, David. Um, it's Monica Garcia, Councilmember here in the city. Thank you for your presentation. And I uh, I wanted to ask you, so we embarked on the Complete Streets and Safe Routes to School initiatives years ago, and, you know, there was a lot of planning involved, a lot of community input, a lot of the features that you've just described in your presentation. And we targeted a corridor, which is Main Avenue, and that's what the mayor was referencing. Yes. And we recently um completed the improvements. So I wanted to ask you about Vision Zero, and I, and I ha- I have uh, I am aware of Vision Zero and um, you know, its goals and objectives. I'm just wondering how it's different from Safe Routes to School, Complete Streets. Does it enhance that and make it, you know, um, just a more wider approach in the city? Is there more funding for Vision Zero uh at this time? I mean, what are your thoughts on that? Just so that I can understand. Or is it, does it all fall in the same bucket? And it's just moving forward, we're gonna be, you know, trying to draw uh drawdown concepts and funding for Complete Streets, Safe Routes to School, and now Vision Zero. So help me understand that a little bit.
Yeah, hello, uh, Councilmember Monica Garcia. It's great to connect with you. Um, yeah, great question. I, I think the strategies, Safe Routes to School and uh Complete Streets policy are all strategies within a bigger vision of Vision Zero, right? So like, if you can think of the Safe Routes to School programming, as well as the Complete, Complete Streets ordinance, serving as one of the strategies um for Vision Zero, i- is I think the best way to frame this. So it's kind of an umbrella of Vision Zero, and then strategies would be Complete Streets and Safe Routes to School. This is, this is Balden, the city of Balden Park declaring that within the next ten years, they're gonna do everything they can to get to zero fatalities, zero traffic-related fatalities. I think that's the, the biggest kind of highlight. It's kind of like you're making a declaration or missions, your mission, and the strategies in which you're gonna achieve that are through enacting Safe Routes to School programming, Complete Streets ordinance, which is some of the design guidelines that are being set forward. And then if you pair that with a funding allocation or commitment, um, that would make you even more, it would make it even more feasible for you to get that.
It just kind of fortifies the package.
Commitment to traffic safety.
Uh-huh. Okay, got it. Yeah, so it's, it's more of a declaration that we're making, and it, it may fortify a package uh moving forward if funding becomes available to show that we've taken these measures. So Vision Zero, Complete Streets, Safe Routes to School, is that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Hernandez.
Thank you. David, uh, thank you again for taking the time, uh, you know, out of your schedule and working, continuing to work with our staff. I know this is something that we've started, you know, we had a conversation back in July. Um, that's just been ongoing, and, you know, as Councilmember Garcia mentioned, uh, you know, the city has been already committed to, you know, safe streets and uh, you know, the sc- school routes. Um, but as you eloquently pointed out, uh, you know, the Vision Zero is the overarching strategy or mission, excuse me, as, as you stated, um, that really makes a commitment um from our side, and I mean from, you know, from the city and also from our staff, uh, to be able to uh ensure that, you know, within ten years, the goal is to not have any type of uh traffic facil- uh fatalities, um, and even, and even injuries, um, you know, in our city. And, you know, adopting this type of policy, you know, we put our, you know, we put, we have skin in the game. Um, by the designs that we're doing, that's, you know, the city has been, you know, recently been doing with Sam and, and his team, along with the police department, and just the way we look at things um from uh, you know, from a three, thirty-thousand-foot uh view. Um, and of course, you know, incorporating the uh, the school district and, of course, your organization. Um, I think it just sets us up in a, in a, in a direction in which, you know, our city will continue to be improving for a very pedestrian-friendly um and pedestrian um usage uh city that we have and population. Um, you know, we have a lot of young individuals riding their bikes. We have a lot of young individuals uh walking in our streets. Um, and of course, our, you know, our, some of our elderly folks. Um, and, you know, one of the things that, that this kind of came about was, uh, you know, having traffic uh officers cross guards at schools, and it's something that we pay for ourselves. You know, one of my goals and hopes is that in the years to come, uh, the parents and students that are using those intersections don't require, don't feel that they have to have a crossing guard at those intersections, because again, the city has taken necessary steps to make it safer uh and make them feel safer in those, in those areas. Um, so regardless whether there's a crossing guard or not, uh, it improves that, that area for uh pedestrian usage. So again, thank you for, thank you for everything that you've done, David, and your team. Um, and of course, the, the ongoing efforts that the council's been doing for the last several years um before today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, it's uh, it's Monica Garcia again. David, I also wanted to uh mention, and I'm sure that you're aware, that we've applied for funding for a quiet zone and uh along, along the um MetroLink, you know, station. I think there are two sites. And uh, one, the main one is at Pacific. And um, well, near City Hall, it's off of Pacific. And I think it's Bogart, but um, that certainly factors into this. And so, you know, like uh Vice Mayor said, it's an overarching declaration, and so I think that it would be important to include, you know, those efforts, because they are unique to our city. Uh, we do have a MetroLink station. And unfortunately, we've had fatalities uh because of our, of the MetroLink. Um, and if there have been at least two or three individuals killed, unfortunately. So that would certainly factor into, to this, and um, I don't know if there, you know, if we need to do that this evening and, and including that, um, or what we need to do, but just wanted to mention that so that it's accounted for in this overarching vision.
Yeah. Well, first of all, thank you all for, for doing the quiet zone. As someone who used to live uh right by the Armani MetroLink station and being woken up constantly in the middle of the night with the loud Metro or freight train horn, I mean, it makes all the difference, you know, for quality of life for residents uh within, you know, nearby proximity of the, the MetroLink station. So thank you all for doing that. And I think that, that And I think that, that, you know, the quiet zone itself, in order for it to be qualified, you have to make certain infrastructure improvements that signal that, you know, it's safe. And so again, that's like an infrastructure change that'll occur behavior mitigate, you know, uh, potential deaths in the future. And so Vision Zero will really cover, you know, all traffic-related deaths, which include MetroLink within the city of Baldwin Park.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Yeah, thanks so much for the presentation. It's definitely where we need to go as a city. And we've, and we've been, you know, we've been making progress in the infrastructure enhancements. And so we just need to keep at it and enhance what we've already, you know, implemented and grow that so that more, more neighborhoods in the city, you know, can benefit from these types of concepts and you know, infrastructure improvements. So, so thank you. Thanks for leading us in this.
All right, anyone else? All right, if not at this point, Mr. David Diaz, thank you very much. And once again, thank Vice Mayor, um, Paul Hernandez for bringing this, uh, this to the agenda. All righty, so at this point, uh, and also Sam Gutierrez, thank you very much. Let's get going with this homework.
All right. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir, absolutely. All right. So at this point, we're gonna, we're going to go over to, um, I have the right one. Okay, the review of affordable senior housing development design proposed by Retirement Housing Foundation Inc. So at this point, we'll have Mr. Ben Martinez. This is a very nice project, by the way. It will actually mark our, let me see, one, uh, our fourth, uh, senior housing, I believe.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and City Council. It's Ben Martinez, Community Development Director for the city. Yes, it's, uh, our pleasure, my pleasure to present this, uh, project to the mayor and city council this evening. The project is an affordable senior housing development of consisting of fifty-four units. It's located, uh, about a, um, just right across the street from the MetroLink Transit Stop at fourteen five one three five one nine Central Avenue. Um, and the project has, uh, about fourteen hundred square feet of ground floor space on it. The project is being proposed by the Retirement Housing Foundation. They're with us tonight and their, their, their architect as well. The project, uh, we're, we're very happy to be working with them. It's the first time they've developed in our community. But this, this organization has a lot of experience building senior housing around the nation, essentially. They've done a lot of projects. And so they're very experienced and we feel, uh, we're feeling with affordable housing, there, it's never an easy task. Uh, there's so many pieces to the puzzle. Uh, but I feel confident that with this developer, uh, we're gonna make it across the finish line and start to see this project under construction, you know, even possibly next year sometime, twenty twenty-one. And that, that would be great. Tonight, we are just talking about the, essentially, the overall design. And I wanted to let this mayor and council know that, uh, planning staff led by Ron Garcia is already had many discussions with the architect and the developer regarding high-quality architecture. We even, uh, you know, pointed out, the mayor made comments about some of the, the multi-family buildings that he's, that he has seen in Monrovia and Pasadena. And when you look at this project, it, it looks like it can fit into any, any type of high-quality community. And that's exactly what we want here in, in Baldwin Park. The project will require a density bonus and three deviations from, um, our, our, our zoning code. That's the four-area ratio, the block coverage, private open space. And these deviations that we allow through the density bonus law are given because the project is affordable. That, that's the law nowadays at the state levels, that you provide affordable housing, you get to, you get to deviate from the code. So that this affordable housing project, which is urban and, and serving, um, lower-income folks can, can fit into the community. And, and we can get a high-quality project on a very small lot. This is a very, very small lot. So, um, the project is being, uh, it will be processed by planning staff. And we need to remember that because of the density bonus law, the city cannot require discretionary approvals. So essentially, tonight is to get the council's input on the design. And, and then have the architect work with, um, that, that input and see what they can do. The project will be exempt from the CEQA process and only requires ministerial approval. So the CEQA process is also not, not applicable. And, um, we've, uh, checked all this out to make sure that we're doing everything right with the city attorney. We had a, a memo drafted from the project's attorney. It was reviewed by the city attorney. He concurs with this process. It's a very expedited process. And that's what the California, the state of California wants. They want to encourage affordable housing like we do locally. So this, this density bonus laws encourage expediting these projects, making the process faster and easier. So we're, we're doing everything we can to, to get this thing moving forward as quickly as possible. So I will introduce the team, or Ron, why don't you introduce the team and have them present the project to the mayor and city council?
Perfect. Thank you, Ben. Uh, good evening, mayor, council staff. I'd like to introduce, uh, Pedro Berba, who is the lead architect, uh, on the project. And, uh, Bob Fard, uh, from Retirement Housing. And last but not least, um, is she on, Ben?
Florence Webb is with us.
Yeah, uh, Florence Webb, that's right. So Florence Webb, uh, with Retirement Housing and Bob Fard and the lead architect, uh, that designed the project, Pedro Berba.
Well, first of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking an opportunity to be here today, um, explaining further on the project. Thank you.
Pedro, please, uh, start. You can present the project.
Pedro. So, uh, this, yeah, this is, this is Bob Fard with Retirement Housing Foundation. Thank you, Ben and Ron and, uh, mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Bob Fard with Retirement Housing Foundation. We're, uh, we're a, a, a nonprofit organization founded in nineteen sixty-one that has since grown into a hundred and ninety-seven communities, most of which are affordable for seniors. We've been working on this project with, with, uh, with staff for about the last two years. So, um, so, you know, we've, we've got a good sense of, of the downtown specific plan as well as the kind of character and, 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 um, flavor of what the city wants to see, uh, at, at this site. And we understand it's gonna be one of the first projects here, um, on the other side of the tracks, both, both figuratively and, and, and literally. And, uh, I, I'm not sure. I, I guess our architect may not be on. I know there was, there was some confusion earlier on today, but I'm just gonna go ahead and, and present this thing the best I can. Uh, we all assumed that, that he was gonna be on tonight, so. With your permission, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and get into some of the design aspects of the building, as well as some of the considerations that, that we had to give and, uh, the concessions that Ben mentioned earlier, that we're asking for as part of, uh, uh, the affordable housing bonus. Because we, we have such a proximity to, um, the local, uh, train stop, we're allowed, um, certain, uh, concessions beyond just the regular density bonus, one of which would be, uh, no parking. Us being a affordable housing developer that keeps all of our buildings, um, we own and manage everything that we build. We don't sell and, and leave town. So, so, uh, you're kind of stuck with us for the long run, but, but we are pretty good neighbors. As far as this building, you know, our operations department wanted to make sure that, that we do have parking because, uh, yeah, even though the law allows us not to have parks, we find most of our senior buildings require parking of some sort, whether it's caretakers, family, or a lot of times the seniors themselves. And so, uh, the first floor is mostly parking of the parking structure. As Ben mentioned, there, there's gonna be about fourteen hundred square feet of commercial space. That will be at the corner, uh, roughly, uh, across from the, the, uh, train stop itself. So we thought that was a good opportunity to put in some retail and, and try to, activate, if you will, that, 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 uh, corner. There'll probably be some traffic, you know, as, as time goes on, this will be a, a more used space. And, uh, we think at some point, uh, a commercial space in that area will, will probably be successful. It is consistent with the downtown specific plan and, um, and that's the main driver, uh, really of, of putting the commercial space in that area. On the other side of the lot, you'll, um, you'll see that we have the, basically the lobby and, and the entrance area for the building. That, that would be where, um, yeah, that, that, that's kind of where you would enter the space, whether you're parking or walking in from the building, which is a fully secure FO, you know, FOB-controlled building as all, all of our buildings. And you get your mail there, you, you know, run into the, the manager and, and maybe the social service worker and either take the stairs or hop on the, uh, and go on to your living space, which is the second, third, and fourth floors. You also see the amenity space, um, some of the, some of the, uh, gardens outdoors, as well as the streetscape, um, which is going to be consistent again with the downtown specific plan. With, you know, the trees at every, I think it's two or three feet or whatever it is. But again, the project will be fully consistent with the, the design elements, the beautification elements. Um, the concept we're looking for are really just the building so that we can put, you know, fifty-four, fifty-five units on less than an acre, which is, you know, for us, pretty good. Um, we think that's, that's a, a, a responsible building. You know, we don't try to get over our skis as far as density goes, um, although the demand for affordable housing is, is infinite. So, um, so the more we can build, really, the, the better for everybody. As far as the design elements, you, these are all one bedrooms. They'll be, you could go to the, where do I have controller? Perfect. Um, so the, the second, third, and, uh, fourth floors are, are more or less, um, the same layout. You'll have some amenity spaces, maybe on the, the third floor and the fourth floor where you'll see arts and crafts room and the exercise room, um, are on the second floor. The third floor would probably have the, the gym and the fourth floor might have the library, for instance. Again, we want to get the residents out and moving around and, um, you know, not being stationary, whether it's on their floor or in their unit. We want them to come out and congregate. Um, so you see a, this is the upper deck courtyard. So as you come out of the building, you're basically on top of the parking structure. And that would be an area that we would, um, landscape, most likely, and, and, you know, put in some, some other, uh, landscape and, and beautification elements up there for, again, draw the residents out and, and have them interact with each other. After doing this, as long as we have, um, we find that, uh, you know, the, the interaction between residents, um, specifically seniors, uh, i- is, is really key to, uh, to mental and physical health. The more they get out and interact, the more they're walking around, the, the more they, they're doing arts and crafts together and, and, you know, doing puzzles and, and, and interacting with their neighbors as opposed to staying in units where, um, you know, your health deteriorates rapidly. You know, those are the kinds of buildings that, that we want to promote. It's, it's like get them out of their, other units and, and outside and interacting with everyone. So, we'll go on to this next slide. Yeah, so, so that would basically be the view from, uh, say, the bus stop, if you will, right out front from the metro station. That's the retail area on the ground floor. You have three floors of living area above. You know, y- y- you don't have a flush stucco siding, right? This is some of the elements we picked up from, from the neighbor town in our, in our, uh, multiple, uh, site visits. You know, a lot of these facades are, um, are relieved and, and not, not monogamous, right? So, so we did the, the breaking up of the siding so that you don't have, you know, one big monolith. And, uh, you know, you have some shading and some angles. It lends itself well to, to kind of the nouveau, uh, redevelopment that we're really looking for, uh, again, on the other side of the tracks. You see the street beautification and, and the downtown, again, it's gonna be, uh, consistent with the downtown specific plan and, and, um, the widening of the street, uh, widening of the sidewalks, uh, the parkways and, and the streetscape, uh, I'm sorry, the landscape, uh, along the street. So that is, uh, the Juliet balconies is something that, uh, that we, as an organization, like, we originally had regular balconies on there. We find that those become a problem in owning these buildings forever. Literally, uh, you know, all these problems we address in these buildings as we move forward. And one of those we find was these, uh, the balconies that end up causing problems, whether it's twenty, thirty, forty years down the line, they cause problems. And so, um, we find that the, what we call Juliet balconies, which are kind of these facade balconies you see, which, you know, still open to the outside and you get fresh air, but you, you, it doesn't really, uh, cantilever outside, uh, out from the building. And, and so that's an element that, that is really more, uh, practical than anything, but it does add a, a pretty good, you know, breakup of the monotony. So, that's kind of, uh, it in a nutshell in the project. You know, we're, we're still kind of going through the fine tuning, but, uh, it is, uh, you know, going to serve seniors, making between thirty percent and sixty percent of AMI. You know, the amenities we talked about, there'll be a workout gym, audiovisual room, um, the outdoor gardens. You know, we intend to tap into HUD financing, uh, as well as other funds and, and sources that we've been able to cobble together in, in the last two years that, that we've been, uh, working on this, a potential project. Which, uh, again, uh, if I didn't mention it, uh, Ben and Ron and and all the staff have, have been really great to work with, um, they really understand the importance of, of these types of projects. Which, again, the, the demand for these is infinite. Uh, we couldn't build these fast enough, um, or dense enough, uh, and have a vacancy. You know, the, the lines are always, you know, uh, a mile long. We usually end up closing these waiting lists. And it becomes a lottery system and, and getting a lot of these people in there. So, that's, that's about it, uh, as far as the building design.
There's one more slide, Bob. Bob, you have one more slide. There you go.
Yeah, sure. Okay, yeah, so, so this would be, um, the top, the top, uh, rendering would be if you're standing at the LA County, uh, yard right across from the site, uh, more or less. And, and the, the photo below, or the rendering below would be kind of, uh, right past the, uh, the, the other end of the building, if you will, right past the, the, um, storage yard, the LA County storage yard. Again, you know, grip of, uh, it's not a one big, uh, monotonous stucco block. You know, we're gonna have different types of, of, uh, siding and, and facades. Again, you see a breakup of, of, uh, of, of the, the tone and the texture really well in the bottom for rendering. I, I, I think the sidewalks are actually gonna be wider than what we're showing there, if I read the downtown specific plan correctly. But I think these give a really good, a general overview of our intent for, you know, what the league's gonna look like. And, and we think, uh, in the long term, this is gonna be the right project in the right place. And hopefully it'll be a catalyst for, uh, again, the other side of the tracks, uh, you know, uh, beautifying uh than what you see now. There, there's a lot of tired, uh, buildings around us and hopefully, um, we'll change that. And a lot of times, frankly, uh, that is exactly the case. We build in South LA, we build in East LA, uh, we build in a lot of areas, being based in Long Beach, uh, in Southern California and, and you know, wouldn't surprise me at all that, you know, after this project goes up, that, that you kind of start seeing other things pop up around us.
Thank you, uh, Bob. I'll just end the presentation by saying that this project is, it starts to push the boundaries of, of the discussions we're having as we update our downtown specific plan. And it, it meets many of the goals and ambitions that we're, we're talking about. Not to get too far ahead of that process. I know it's, it's just started. But this is, uh, the kind of process that will pioneer, uh, the, the new downtown plan. And, and we're definitely looking at that area, uh, for, for expansion, the downtown specific plan, possibly to expand more in that area. Uh, and then lastly, we are, uh, uh, we are working with the developer to look at, uh, public assistance, uh, the, 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 the council authorized staff to, uh, produce a project-based voucher, a request for proposals. And this will allow us to help finance a project. We're, we're looking to provide, um, possibly project-based vouchers that the developer will have permanently at the project for the low-income seniors. And that's And that's very similar to the type of project across the street from City Hall. They also have project-based voucher type of assistance. Um, thank you. We'll take any questions or comments, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Council members, should you do, share any, any input?
Mayor?
Yeah, is that Councilmember Monica? I gotta see. I don't, I think you're in the dark somewhere.
Yes, that's me. So I do have a question, um, or a few questions. Um, so what are the, what are the deviations from the code? We, we talked about the floor area ratio and what were the other two?
Anyone?
Bob, I mean, I'm sorry, Ron?
Yeah, yes. Yes, uh, Councilmember Garcia, the deviations, um, that are being requested are FAR lot coverage. Uh, the other is common and private open space area. And lastly, the minimum, uh, residential floor areas of the units, um, as allowed, uh, under the state, uh, density bonus.
Okay, and that was going to be my next question is, what, what are we looking at in terms of the size of each unit?
I can speak to that.
Perfect. Oh, but, uh, Pedro's, uh, on with us. Sorry about that. There was a little technical difficulty. Um, uh, Pedro.
Yes, I've been on, but I was, uh, I was muted. Uh, great job, Bob. Hello? Okay, so, um, one of the financing vehicles for, for this project is, uh, federal two O two, uh, funds and, uh, from HUD. And HUD has some, uh, lengthy requirements relative to the housing that they will finance. And, uh, the unit square footage is limited to five hundred square foot, uh, five hundred and forty square feet for a one-bedroom apartment. And that, that lines up with the requirements of, uh, TCAC, uh, in the state of California.
What was the square footage you said?
It's five hundred and forty, five four zero.
Okay, thank you. And that's, is that for a one-bedroom?
That is one bedroom, correct.
All right.
And Pedro, how many, how many units?
It's, uh, the, the project is fifty-five units. It's fifty-four one-bedrooms and, uh, one two-bedroom, uh, manager's unit.
Okay, okay. And so that's one of the deviations and why we're asking for less than what the code would allow for a one-bedroom.
And Monica, just so, so that way it just give you a little more, um, uh, for reference. So the devi- they're proposing, um, for a one-bedroom, the, the, under that zone for mixed use, it requires seven hundred, uh, square feet for, for it to be a, uh, a one-bedroom unit. And the deviation is two hundred square feet.
Yeah, okay, I see. And then when we say that it doesn't require discretionary action, so it doesn't need to go to the planning commission or to the city council?
That is correct, based on state, uh, density bonus law. Um, based on the criteria of the way that this project, uh, is being proposed, given that it's a hundred percent affordable. And also to add that it's in one half, it's a half mile of a major transit center. So if it, if you can make, check all those boxes, essentially allows, uh, the developer to come in and submit, uh, for ministerial approval. Um, uh, so, does not, as you tend to your question, does not require planning commission or, uh, city council, uh, discretionary approval.
Okay, so even more the reason why, you know, this presentation is important so that we can provide any input um, right now. And I did have a question, uh, about the design. What is the, I, I didn't see the commercial. If we can bring back the, um, the rendering, if we could bring that back on the screen. Um, thank you. So I see that in the front, there's like something projecting out. What is, can somebody help me understand that?
Yes, that is supposed to be a, uh, shading device. It's, uh, like a trellis.
Okay, and is it going to project out quite a bit of feet?
It's, uh, it's going to project, um, just enough to take, uh, the sunlight off of the glass on the, uh, on the retail. Uh, we have that here on the corner and we also have it at the, uh, uh, residential entry at the opposite end of the building.
Okay, is there any rendering that shows it more, you know, from the side so that we can see, get a, a clear view of, of how it projects out? I mean, is, and it looks like it's, um, it's going to be just kind of like a box, like a rectangular box that's being projected out. So is everybody on the council okay with that?
I mean, it, it looks nice. Councilmembers?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it, you guys. Um, because I feel that it, it complements the rest of it, but I can understand Monica's concern in terms of like, it's a little bit different, I guess, if you, if you are focused on it. But I'm okay with it for its purpose.
Well, as long as we all are looking and seeing the same thing, because sometimes what happens is a project is built and then, you know, it's after the fact. So-
Yeah, Councilmember Garcia.
Uh-huh.
Sorry, we'll make sure we put that at the top of our, uh, value engineer list. But a- 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 as you know, you know, a, a lot of these projects, they, uh, you know, they'll, they'll take a little bit different shape and form when they're actually built. Um, and, and so, but we'll definitely take that into consideration from an owner's standpoint. We don't love that element either, uh, but we do understand there needs to be some sort of shading or, or at least some sort of breakup of the monotony, um, of, of the building.
Oh, okay. And I think this rendering looks great. I like how it's, you know, kind of got that transitional height going. I think it was just more in the front where it was just kind of projecting out. And, um, I think everything else looks very nice. I really like how you've designed it with, you know, this articulation and, um, the different colors and the features, you know, the stone or the brick. Um, it was just that one, so maybe if you, if you guys don't really, you know, are not big fans and can think of something in its place. But otherwise, I mean, I think it looks very nice. And so the commercial is right below at, at that entry at the corner there. Is that what I'm, okay. Uh, I see it. Okay, thank you. Appreciate for, for pointing it out more. Okay.
And that's basically right across from, from the metro stop, if you will. So, uh, you know, the thought being there is when you get to your stop or, or, you know, when you're, when you're getting off, off your stop, uh, maybe that's a potential to, to pop your head in there and grab a coffee or a sandwich or a bottled water. I don't know, but, you know, that, that was kind of, that's the, the audience we're trying to capture. Cause I don't think people are going to be driving to this area, uh, just to hit this retail spot, right? It's not really on man first.
Yeah, that's a nice little feature, especially for those wanting to grab a coffee in the morning and, you know, maybe it's a bite to eat, things like that. So I like that. That's a great, um, addition to the project. So otherwise, I think it's beautiful. It looks really good.
All right, Councilmember-
I have a question.
I haven't that yet.
Yes, and I know in the courtyard area, what do you plan on doing there? Are you putting benches? Uh, what are you doing there for, for the residents?
Yes, we will. We, we will have benches and, uh, uh, there is also on, uh, on the lower level. There is a, um, an actual vegetable garden also.
Oh, okay. Where is that exactly?
Uh, if, um, uh, if we have the slide of the first floor plan, there is a, um, a landscaped area that is, uh, accessible from the elevator lobby. It's the, I would call it the northeast corner of the site. And, uh, we would have raised planters so that the seniors could do hobby gardening.
Okay, and then I know you said you will have different activities. Do you have a, a calendar for them? That they come down on certain days, you have certain activities planned for them, or is they just randomly come to the activity areas?
I think-
Yeah, so, uh, thank you for the question, Councilmember. Yeah, the, the, we, probably a little bit of both, because this isn't a humongous building. And, and, you know, I didn't mention, we actually own and operate, uh, the largest senior affordable building, uh, in the nation that we know of. It's in downtown LA, the Angeles Plaza, uh, which is about al- almost eleven hundred units, uh, adjacent to Angel's Flight. If you're, if you've ever ridden Angel's Flight, um, you've been right next to our building, uh, the four towers right there. And we find, you know, when we own that type of community, uh, we definitely need to have a calendar and we, and we produce calendars, I think, two months in advance. And, and the activities are, are well, uh, 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 advertised to everybody. On a fifty-five unit project like this, um, we'll probably have some calendars if, if, uh, there's a special event or something that's really important for, uh, the residents to, to attend, whether it's, you know, uh, how to use a, a bank app or, uh, you know, uh, put Uber on your phone or, or whatever it is, or computer training classes. Um, just because there's not that many people, so you could probably get away with, uh, with, with doing a calendar and, and just kind of having people pop their heads in. And, and if enough people kind of show up and ask the same question, then maybe that merits a calendar event to where everyone kind of gets a notice that, you know, in three weeks, we're going to kind of do this, this type of program.
Mm-hmm. I know some projects that, that hold, you know, like Christmas events, um, Thanksgiving events where everybody joins in and has type of potluck. So I was wondering if you did those type of events for them.
Oh, yeah, that's a given. Uh, in fact, the employees try to go to those things, because at the senior buildings, they do it right. Uh, and we always have a community kitchen, uh, you know, a- and so again, we want to get everyone out and, and, uh, interacting with each other. And, yeah, those potlucks, whether our social services, uh, coordinators or the management, managers set, the residents end up setting those up themselves. So, uh, so that really works out. As long as you give them a venue, uh, to interact and come out and, and socialize, um, those events and things end up happening. With the senior buildings, not necessarily, yeah.
I like the fact that you're keeping them engaged and busy, because you're right, a lot of them may just want to stay indoors. Some of them may not have anybody coming over to visit. And the fact that you guys are engaging everybody, I think it's great to keep them busy and motivated. I like the rendering and everything looks really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor, uh, Arnaud.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned that the square footage for these units are approximately five hundred square feet, give or take?
Five forty.
Five forty. Um, is it possible to ex, you know, eliminate one unit to be able to expand on these units a little bit more? Cause, you know, what's a, what's five forty? Is that like twenty-three by twenty-five by twenty-four by twenty-four or something, or twenty-five by twenty-three?
In this case, they're about, uh, twenty-two by twenty-five, something like that.
Got it. Um, and just out of curiosity, the other bill, the other build-outs that we have, maybe, you know, Ron will know this. Um, what about, what about the, um, the facilities across the street, uh, that were recently built? How big are those right now? And even the dalku ones across?
A good question, Councilmember. I was in here at the time, um, and unfortunately I don't know what the average sizes are of those units.
Right, I mean, cause again, um, you know, I appreciate everything that I love of the design and everything else of the, of the project. And I certainly am well aware of your project in downtown LA, which used to be the old, uh, uh, F, you know, if I remember correctly, those were the old, uh, Olympic, uh, housing, um, units, uh, for the eighty-four Olympics that were, uh, converted over, if I remember correctly. Uh, but honestly, if we could, you know, expand the, the space, um, for some of these units, um, I'd appreciate that, because, you know, once you start adding, you know, someone in a wheelchair, um, and other type of, uh, mobile, uh, units to help them walk around, uh, it becomes a little bit cramped. Uh, and I know, you know, one of the purposes and one of the good things that you guys have been doing for quite some time is, you know, it's, you know, pulling them outside of their, uh, their homes, uh, or their bedrooms to be more active, um, outside. Uh, you know, with all the various activities that, you know, Councilmember Avila had mentioned and stuff that you guys have mentioned. But, um, ideally for myself is, you know, we would be able to eliminate one of the units to be able to make some of them a little bit larger. Or perhaps, you know, if there's one that's, you know, that's more of, um, you know, uh, wheelchair accessible, a little bit larger, um, to allow a little bit free flowing, um, for that type of ADA design. Uh, I certainly would be, you know, much more appreciative of, of, of that.
The, uh, the state of California, because they are involved in the project also from a financing standpoint, uh, they require that a hundred percent of the units in a senior building be ADA accessible. So all of these units are ADA accessible. And additionally, the feds on their two O two require that all units comply with what's called universal design, which is the concept of allowing people to age in place. And all these units are compliant with that, uh, concept.
Perfect. And, and then what about a little bit of, of the, uh, extra elbow room to be able to have? Uh, you know, if they have somebody over or a couple of folks over in their units, you know, if they don't all cramped up in a, you know, a small little studio, essentially is what we're calling them.
These projects are competitive as to the cost of construction. And so inevitably, any increase in square footage is an increase in cost.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, that, that's, that's a great point, uh, Pedro and, and Mayor Pro Temp. I, I appreciate the question. Actually, I think it's a very responsible question is, you know, what are you guys building in my town? Um, and why is it so small? Uh, I'll, I'll be honest with you, this new density bonus law, actually because we're within a half mile of that train stop, allows us, believe it or not, unlimited density, uh, which automatically triggers micro units. Um, again, as long-term owner developers of these buildings, we don't want micro units. Um, you know, we don't want to do what they're going towards in Hawaii and some of these other areas where they don't have real estate. There's only one solution to this affordable housing now crisis, and that is to go micro units and to go up, uh, as much as you can. Uh, but again, uh, you know, that's, that's a whole different ball of wax for a company like us. That's not how we build and, and how we manage and operate. Uh, and so, you know, th- that is a consideration that we have. And, and we found that, you know, going back to Pedro's point, for every dollar we spend on these units, um, it's not like a market rate developer where we get to charge an extra ten cents a foot, because now they have more elbow room. That's just more cost that we have to absorb, because that rent is fixed. Um, whether we spend a hundred bucks a foot or a thousand dollars a foot, the rent we're going to collect doesn't change at all. And so, uh, you know, we have to kind of find that, that, that sweet spot. Um, and, and frankly, five forty is, is actually a, a pretty fair, uh, square footage for affordable housing, uh, in today's marketplace at least.
This is hard to explain with RHF. Let me just add something. We're looking at this as being a HUD two O two funded project. And HUD will not allow us to have unit sizes any larger than five hundred and forty square feet. And, um, we, across the country, we've built many of these and we have excellent design teams. And you'd be amazed, um, what they can put into and how comfortable these five hundred and forty square foot one-bedroom apartments are. They do an excellent job. Pedro is doing that. So we have good design teams all over the country that does that, but we are limited by HUD, unfortunately, to only have five hundred and forty square feet.
Thank you.
Are the councilmembers wishing to add anything? Let me, let me just, uh, first of all, thank you very much for doing the presentation. Several concerns for me, um, on this project. First of all, um, Ben, explain to me. So I know we have several other similar projects that are coming through. This one doesn't have to go to CEQA, doesn't have to go to the council, doesn't have to go to the planning commission. So basically, it gets, it gets built regardless of what we want, because they purchased the land. Am I correct? A- a- and that, or am I wrong?
That's essentially the case, Mr. Mayor, but not because they bought the land, whether it was their land or even our land. Um, as in the case of some of the other projects, it, it's still, um, is the same entitlement process. Now, if we own the land- Now, if we own the land, we're gonna enter into a development agreement to exchange the land and we can put conditions in, in that regard. So there are, it's a little different process.
But in this case, we don't because that's basically an independent, uh, um, landowner, what have you. So, so we get another project similar to this, and I'm not saying the one that we're looking at off of Ramona, uh, without mentioning the actual area. Are they also in similar, is that a similar project with, with, uh, uh, w- w- with what this project's, uh, um, is being proposed, the same?
Yes, they will take advantage of, of the same downtown specific plan, um, you know, uh,
What is?
Benefits, the density bonus and so forth, yes.
So it is, in other words, it's the same, it's the same application through HUD. So they, they don't have to go through CEQA, they don't have to go to planning commission, they don't have to go to city council. Am I correct? Am I wrong? The one, well, proposed, uh, on Ramona. You know which one I'm talking about?
Yes, um, yeah, on the, um, north end, northwest.
Yes, yes.
Um, very similar, Mr. Mayor. There might be some slight differences, but I will say very similar, yes.
The, the only concern long-term involving Park are these type of projects, uh, because we have limited and I, I, I perceive, you know, we, we need it. We obviously need it, especially for the seniors, but the mere fact that the city has very limited, very limited, uh, power over the SASO, that is definitely a concern, uh, for me. Five hundred and forty, that's a very small space, uh, for anyone, but of course, yes, there, the density bonus and so on and so forth that, that, that they're, they're talking about. I, I, I understand that part. Um, my concern is not having, you know, these projects that are being built overnight because there is a lack of housing. We know that three point five million, uh, um, uh, has, has been, um, requested throughout the state of California. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be interesting, uh, uh, regarding this, this project here. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, it, it looks, it looks good. Those are my concerns and long-term concerns for the city of Ballpark. How many, how many units are going to be in, uh, in, in this project?
Uh, fifty-four units, Mr. Mayor.
Here's another thing I, I don't like, because it's federal funded. The disadvantage here for the city of Ballpark, and I've said this over and over, is that it is open for anyone throughout the county or throughout the state for that matter. So it's a major disadvantage. We're building, uh, um, uh, this type of, of, of facility. I want ballpark residents, but we can't have that. So there's no guarantee that all fifty-four units are going to be occupied by ballpark residents. So those are the disadvantages that we have. Uh, and, uh, you know, uh, so tha- that just want, I just want to state that for the record. Cause I wish it was just Ballpark residence, but that happened to the Rome project, uh, that happened to the Telukoo project and that happened to the Paloma project that I was present. That's, that's, let's go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is true. And, and to address that, those are fair hous- housing laws, which we must respect and, and abide by, but we are allowed to market this project locally and we will do that. Um, and there's many things we can, um, do to market this project locally. Um, we just cannot, um, you know, discriminate, so to speak, out, have people that live outside of the city, but we.
And I, and I understand that, Ben. For me, the discrimination is a sad part that our own residents can't get it. We're talking about trying to house, uh, this, this report by the, uh, by the county, like five hundred and something on homeless. Well, you know what? Let's get some of these seniors that are involved, that are part of that. But that's the unfortunate part. Yes, I understand. The, the, the discrimination is that we can't, it cannot be one hundred percent city Ballpark. And that's a sad part, but I just want to place that on the record for everyone to know.
And I agree, I agree with you on that part, Mayor, because that's a conversation I've had with Ben also, uh, to give priority to our residents. But Ben, you said that we can advertise to our residents first, or is that what you said? Or what was it that you said exactly?
Is, we essentially can market locally and there's nothing wrong with marking, marketing locally, that, you know.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, ideally, like the mayor said, would be to get our residents to profit from all of this and our homeless. But we understand there's laws that we need to follow. Maybe someday that will change and, uh, we can do that or every city because we're not the only city with this problem. But the, but the rendering is nice. It is small, yes, uh, but they are following all the guidelines. Thank you.
Oh yeah, no, absolutely. Th- and thank you for that, uh, council member Alejandro Everlin. Good point on your part. I guess my concern and my frustration is that, you know, these new projects are good, but they're not really benefiting the city of Ballpark i- in general. Um, but nevertheless, it's, it's, it's what it is at this point. We're gonna move forward. So thank you very much for the presentation.
And Mayor, um, what we had done in the past and we can probably do in this case, um, is we prepared the marketing notifications um, and we sent those out to Ballpark residents first so that, um, hopefully they could be the first to get in line, um, for the project. And we'll work with the developer to do that again.
Now, out of curiosity, so is that done on a, on a, on a lottery basis? Come on after that, please.
It, it probably will, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there's so much demand that it usually ends up being a, a lottery. So the goal is to try to get as many local Ballpark residents to apply so that there, there's a better chance of housing local people through the lottery. But it definitely will be a lottery because for fifty-four units, I've seen, um, thousands, two thousand, three thousand, uh, applications. And I'm sure the developer has too.
Yes, and I've seen that with those other senior projects that we have here. The unfortunate part, the good portion that we're, we're not, didn't go to local residents because of lottery. But again, I understand there's laws that are involved there. I perceive they're unfair to cities, especially like the city Ballpark. This community is, is, is no different than others, but we have a, uh, uh, high necessity to be able to house uh, some of our homeless and some of the individuals that are, are not, uh, are, you know, just can't make it out there on their own. But nevertheless, could be on that all night at this point.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes, council member.
I just want to, um, based on what you just, the comments that you just made, I do have a question for Ben. And it's regarding the funding so that we know moving forward, if we wanted to create housing that is more, uh, available, accessible to our local residents, would we be able to do that using city funds? Or even with city funds, because they're, they're public funds, we wouldn't be able to create, you know, that, um, that ability to kind of make a choose.
That's correct, council member. We, exact, the latter of what you said.
Uh huh. So.
Even if we.
So even if we had our own funds instead of federal funds, uh, to complete a project, we would still be required to go through the lottery process and that's really open to the public.
Yes.
Well, it's good to know. I mean, on the positive side of this, uh, you know, you would hope that some of our residents will be housed, but this could also be a catalyst project for some of the development in the area.
It would be, that's a, that's a council member, go ahead.
Yeah, and perhaps, you know, that would be a benefit for the, the neighborhood moving forward. You know, changing up, changing up the, the uses, especially along the metro link. Right now, I think they're more industrial, like they're light industrial, if I recall. So, you know, that, this could be, so, this could serve as a catalyst, catalyst project for that, for further redevelopment. And then I think, you know, at that point, we might have more discretion of what projects come in because it would probably just be, you know, private at that point, not affordable housing. So just adding a little something, you know, side note of the benefits.
Alright.
And that could, that could contribute to our economic development plan. So, I mean, tell me what you think, Sam. I, I'm sorry, Sam. Uh, Ben, what do you, I mean, does, would you agree with that?
Yes, I do. I do. Um, this, we're at the beginning in our downtown plan development. We, we do have the Rome project. There's, but, but this and the other projects that we have slated is gonna be the catalyst for more, more, uh, projects, not just affordable, but hopefully market rate. And, um, that, that's gonna, you know, present a lot more opportunities and a lot more potential for ec- economic growth. So we, we want to encourage all of it, I think, that's the plan, but we want to do it wisely. We want to do it though, in a, in a carefully, you know, in a plan very carefully so that at the end of the day, this one project looks great in that overall, uh, downtown development vision in that specific plan. And that's, that's the idea.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member Monica Garcia. Anyone else? If not, at this one, want to thank the presenters and thank you very much, Ben, uh, Martinez for the presentation. Thank you. So we're gonna go on to the next.
Thank you.
My, my, thank you very much. Okay, my battery on my Mac is about to run out. So I'm gonna step over there where Dina, Miss, Miss Councilmember Yala's at, until, and then I'll hook up to my phone after. Alright, thank you.
Okay, and Mayor, I think, um, you're ready to adjourn to, uh, adjourn to closed session?
Your microphone's off.
I think the mayor just stepped away. He said his phone, something about his phone.
He did just step away, but he said we were going to adjourn to closed session.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna adjourn?
Yeah, everybody can log off and then those involved in closed session can log into that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.